I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight to the Central School District Board Meeting for the month of June. And so again, I want to say thank you and welcome to the Central School District Board Meeting. Comments from the community are entertained during the time designated under Communications Public Comments. If you wish to speak to the Board, please fill out a comment card and turn it in to the Board Secretary or the Board Chair at the beginning of the meeting. Speakers' comments in this formative forum are limited to three minutes, but the Board welcomes additional information in writing. Personnel laws prohibit the Board from hearing public comments about an individual in an open meeting. All complaints must go through the Board's approved process as outlined in Board Policy KL. This form may be found on our website or by calling the District Office. Typically, if speakers' comments is taken under advisement to allow time for the Board to review an issue. However, the Board Chair or other Board members may ask a speaker for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses their comment. Please note on the speaker card if you would like to receive follow-up communication, and if so, what avenue is preferred. And once again, thank you for your attendance at this meeting in the Central School Board. So, we're going to start with, we have a very nice presentation here for Mr. Rich McFarland, so why don't you come up so I can give you something here? I think I'm loud enough you can hear me without that. So, Rich, for all of your support, for all of your guidance and the service you've given others, may coming years be filled with joy and fulfillment you so greatly deserve and have so fully earned. Our gratitude always to Rich McFarland, retiring after 17 years of outstanding service and dedication to Central School District 13J. Best wishes for 2001 to 2018.
Thank you, Scott.
(applause)
We're doing these now a little bit?
We're going to have them come up first, yes.
These three?
Yes, so, Mr. LaBounty, could I, have you come forward and a few of your students that we have chatted about, or you want to come up first in Portland?
Sure, I could ask Ms. Steph, the teacher, and my three students. Babies of recognition, I just get out of the way.
How about these three?
We got three.
So, here are examples of girls.
So, if you all would just take a quick moment and share with us how this all came about?
Yes, that was the plan, I would start.
Perfect.
Okay, so...
Please have a seat.
Oh. Do you understand that? Should we sit on our laps? So, these three students, they placed in a Northwest competition to the Oregon Jewish Museum and Holocaust Education Center up in Portland. This was the Sala Kreshak Art and Writing Contest, and I was thrilled when I found out that my three students placed, all three of them, and we were, we kind of all did the happy dance. So, this is Julianne Macbeth, and she won the grand prize, a trip to Washington DC, not only for herself but for me and the parents. So, we have an unexpected vacation-y, education-y kind of trip to Washington DC. This is Jocelyn Donmeyer, and she won second, and this is Caleb MacArthur, and he won third. And it wasn't until we got up to the luncheon where they were awarded that we realized it was the Portland Art Museum that was judging the artwork. And so, a win or even any place within that competition, pretty much a big deal, and kudos to Talmadge and to Central. (applause)
Oh, wait, listen. Yeah, so just share a little bit about each of your pieces and you would have time.
Yes, so this is my art piece. It was supposed to be based off of the remorse of a Holocaust survivor and how they felt. I did this, I wrote a poem called "Two Tears," and if you can see in the back, there's lines, blue lines, and those represent the tears that were streaming. And it was just about the remorse of a Holocaust survivor. Are they good enough for two tears to be shed? Because in the Jewish religion, it is believed that when a person dies, God sheds two tears. So, I wanted that, I wanted to focus on that more and on the Jewish faith. And, yeah, and so my art piece goes with my poem. And so, the prompt was actually about the silent bystanders, mostly about how the Nuremberg laws restricted these people from their daily life that they had. And so, I had a big pile of ash right here, and I didn't want the pile of ash just to represent that the people, what the people lost and their belongings that were in it, but I also wanted the ash to represent the silent bystanders that just stood there and couldn't do anything and just sat there like a pile of ash.
I'm going to pass it on to Josie.
Okay, so, this one was mine, it's the one with the guy and the fire, and, yeah. So, I wrote a poem too, and my poem really explains my piece, so I'll just read that. So, it's called, entitled "Deportation of a Soldier's Soul," and it says, "He chose the right, that's what he thought, he was the hero, following the plot. Little did he know how badly he was caught, Hitler's trap was set. The soldier, the hero, the protagonist, he was dreaming of the Germany he would save. Antagonist, villain, killer, he saw all, all he would bring was shame." So, what's that saying is, it's talking about a soldier who was fighting for his country and thought that what he was doing all along was the right thing to do, but halfway through this giant war that Hitler put them through, he realizes how far off of the straight narrative he'd gone. And so, like, how does my art piece affects everyone nowadays, I suppose, is it's really a self-evaluation piece, that we should always be thinking about where we are and where we're going, and, yeah, what we stand for and how we did to get there, so, yeah.
I'll take a knee. All right, so, in my art piece, I named it "Hitler's Eyes." I also made a poem for this art piece, I did not have a memoir, that's my bad. So, in my piece, I tried to capture kind of not only what, how do I say this, not only what the people lost in the Jewish community and other communities, but also what, kind of what Hitler was seeing. I mean, through this art piece, I was asking myself the question, why? Why would such a horrendous act be taken into action by this man, and how was he able to convince the nation? And that is a question I think we will never be able to answer. And so, in my piece, I tried to capture what I thought, what I thought Hitler was seeing throughout all of this, and I think the most, probably the most powerful image I added in this was the glasses that I used for him to form his suit that he was wearing in his portrait. I would say that image struck me the most, not only because they were making them, they were making them work in these camps as slaves, as their workers, and their, and the thing is, what struck me is, how do you, how do you expect a blind man to work if he cannot see? And you can, like, they pretty much were taking away what they used in their everyday life to do things, see things, and they just took that away and expected them to still be able to, you know, function.
Well, let's start with Caleb. So, Caleb, I got another copy of your poster if you want to pass that around. So, we started a student recognition thing, so stand up here, and I got a certificate for you, so it says, "Certificate of Recognition is hereby awarded to Caleb MacArthur in recognition of his service to Talmadge Middle School and the Greater Monmouth Independence Community through Art and Education, granted this day, 4th of June 2018, at Henry Hill Elementary School, and is signed by myself and the superintendent." Congratulations. Julianne, you're next. There's another copy of yours.
Oh, cool.
It says, "Certificate of Recognition is hereby awarded to Julianne Macbeth in recognition of her service to Talmadge Middle School and the Greater Independence Monmouth Community through Art and Education." And I got to tell you guys, I can't draw where the darned so these are all amazing. "In recognition of her service to Talmadge Middle School and the Greater Independence Monmouth Community through Art and Education, granted this 4th day of June 2018, and signed by the superintendent, myself." Jocelyn, we got one for you that sounds just like hers, and it says, "Hearns" instead of him, and another copy of your poster.
One last thing before you all leave, if you would be so kind to the video, just to take your photos and work, we would like to show them because the Board meetings are replayed, and so we actually want to show your artwork, so if you could take just a second, just stand up and she'll take it real quickly. Next one, thank you.
While they're doing that, what I want to tell you is that, they would have brought their art, but their art is still displayed in the Oregon Holocaust Museum, so it is still left there and fully displayed. This was not just a contest for Oregon, these are regional winners. So, they have had a huge impact. I have got connections to the Holocaust Museum, and they said, "It doesn't happen where three students from one school or community win something," but you guys are so outstanding, and what I want to say from them is, you've impacted survivors and their childrens by your artwork.
Can you, could you start putting the images from the retreat, please?
The Powerlifting has been busy during the last several weeks. We attended a two-day planning retreat at Camp Tillicum where we started some planning for next year. We had lunch at Costco, which was a first for many of us. Then we spent a few hours at bowling balls for some team bonding and fun before heading to the camp, where we had a great combination of planning, relaxing, including fishing, a bonfire amidst mores. Because so many students in the class would be graduating, we wanted to leave a firm foundation of lesson ideas for each part of the power matrix, and we also wanted to leave a plan for connecting the trauma-informed approach, including the social-emotional learning from the QSO model to each power lesson. We were able to accomplish this, provide lots of feedback for ways to improve CHS, and continue to build a positive school climate.
And then, there's some pictures from our retreat at Camp Tillicum. And then, we also hosted our final assembly last Friday, where we started a new tradition with the senior video. I don't know if you can play a little bit of that? It just has some pictures from when we were little kids to our senior year, and the slideshow also includes a tribute to one of our classmates, Cody Watson, who passed away almost two years ago. And during this slideshow, our seniors laughed and we cried and we also celebrated. And then, our staff surprised us with a crazy flashbulb, where they were singing, dancing, skating, and scootering, ribbon dancing, and letting off confetti poppers. And then, our seniors were asked to stand and proceed to the upper area of the panta pit, where we were able to look down on the remaining students, as the class of 2019 was asked to rise and move to the senior section, and then the class of 2020 was asked to rise to junior section, and the class of 2021 was asked to move to the sophomore section. As each class proceeded to their new seating area in the gym, it mattered with their graduating classes released above their seating section. The assembly ended with the seniors being dismissed from their final CHS assembly. That's kind of mostly what we did, and since this is going to be our last time presenting at the Board Meetings because we are graduating on Friday. I just want to thank you guys for letting us share updates from our Powerlifting class and the opportunity to improve our public speaking skills. They're not that good, but we try today. And, yeah, I just want to say that the Powerlifting class has really impacted me ever since this classroom forced us to sign up just for the class. We've been here for three years now, so it's really good seeing how our class has grown and how all of us are like one big family. So, yeah, thank you.
I just am going to say one thing, I cannot have favorites of students, because you're all my favorite, just to be clear, but in a Board Meeting, this is probably when you all share, both you and Asbeck, and it's my favorite part, and you will both be missed. I have enjoyed getting to know you in my first year here. I look forward to what you have established for the people, for the students behind you and those even that are sitting behind you that may one day aspire to be in the Powerlifting class, and the impact that you all do every day, not only at CHS but within the community. So, I thank you all. You will be missed here by me, and I'm sure by everyone else here, so thank you for what you guys have done. (applause)
I'm Donna Walker.
I'm Terry Berry.
And we're from Transportation. We came to tell you a little bit about our Fill the Bus, which is an annual event that we do to collect food for Ella Coran, our local food bank. It's very close to my heart. So, this year, we decided to kick it up a notch and do something a little different and kind of make it more of a fun event, and we took pictures of everything to show you guys too. But what we decided to do is to challenge another department, another transportation department. We put out feelers to everybody, and Dallas accepted our challenge. And so, we decided that we'd set a date for that, and we would have them come and do, you know, on the same day we weighed our bus in, and they were pretty competitive. We had to take pictures of the dash to prove that we didn't put fuel in it afterward. So, and then, we decided to make things a little bit more exciting, more of a community event. So, we did some of the different things, you want to tell us some of the things we did?
Yeah, we had the privilege of working with a few different organizations, the Monmouth Police Department, they were gracious enough to come and bring bikes to donate and, as well as helmets. And then, we also had Nancy from the Mid Valley Bike Club, and she gave away helmets. And it was, how many did we give away?
Over 50 helmets to children.
Over 50 helmets to children and adults as well.
And they were professionally fit for the children, which is a big deal.
Yeah, so that was really great. And then, we also had the Independence Police participated. You'll see on some of the screens, Cliff, one of the drivers at the bus barn, he made the pots of flowers and we raffled those off. And so, there was a lot of participation, everybody in the department helped, and Maurici, one of the drivers, also decided to make the trophy. So, this is...
And we won it.
We won it. So, Dallas was competing against us, and the totals, total pounds that we collected this year was 2,960 pounds of food, and that's between all the schools. And it was so fun, because Cease suggested that we go ahead and get the schools a little bit more motivated, and so, out of the schools and the transportation, District Office, all of us, it's right here, we all, oh yeah, they're just, so, 1,756 pounds.
From the schools.
From the schools.
Versus last year, it was 175 pounds.
Right.
So, big difference when you motivate people and challenge people to challenge each other.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, Cease stepped up, but we also had some amazing donations from people. There were some people at the schools and at the different buildings, because it was for the buildings, the district was involved too. They did pretty good, but not as good as us, because we won that. For cabinet. But they did good, and we had a couple really amazing donations. The district, Alyssa, she stepped up, it was absolutely amazing. Her donation brought in to the District Office 340 pounds. And what some of the people were doing was saying, "I can't get to the store," and so we said, "Well, we'll go shop for you." And they got the credit for their department, if they couldn't get to the store. I know Steve Milligan from our department, he donated $100 for food, to just go get food. And we did, and we were able to just bring in so much food, it was unbelievable. Dallas only had 1,000 pounds, so you can imagine how good, you know, we felt after that.
And then, you'll see some of the costumes that we are wearing. The SPAM costume, that's not computer spam, okay, that's...
The SPAM?
Yeah. Nancy, one of our drivers, she made some of those costumes, and so, everybody participated, and it was awesome.
It was a great team building, because we were all out there, and if you couldn't go, they would pitch in and do something else, like Maurici couldn't make it that day, and she made this, and it kind of represents the canned food drive, but also, it takes a lot of heart to do this every year, and to put your heart into it, and to make it important, because Ella Coran is so important to this community. They give out so much food, that it really is a wonderful thing, it's a joy for us to do it every year, it really is. Next year, we have other districts interested in challenging us, so we're going to start a food drive revolution, and we're going to challenge other districts. This trophy will be passed from district to district. If they win it, they can hold it for a year, but then they have to give it back for the next competition, and we're going to be putting the names and the amount of pounds on the side of the trophy every year.
Thank you, Ray. We are in year five of the five-year grant, we are actually completing programs on Wednesday this week, so we're in a big push right now. So, thank you first of all for allowing us to be squeezed into your tight schedule for the Board Meeting. We've had a, just a very dedicated, passionate group of staff over the last five years who has built a great foundation for after-school programs, and from that foundation has expanded into just opportunities for students that they might not otherwise get, or whatever we can engage them in to get them excited about something outside of the school day. So, our goal this year was that, and family engagement was another goal, sustainability, family engagement and sustainability across the state are the two biggest challenges facing all after-school programs. So, we have a pretty brief glimpse of what we did in year five, but how we also tried to prepare for things moving forward with after-school programs, whatever that looks like, and allowing students opportunities where they can still continue to grow through enrichment. So, I want to thank the parents and students and staff that took the time to come tonight. There's quite a contingency out here, I'm going to just introduce the first person, then I'm going to let everybody else introduce themselves and tell a little bit about the either club or enrichment or site that they facilitated. So, the first person, oh, and just speaking of competition, I love that, how Transportation talked a little bit about competition, it made me laugh, because UNICEF Kid Power, which is what Teresa Henderson, our first, Teresa is the data coordinator and curriculum writer for our programs, and she does a great job, so she took on the UNICEF Kid Power project, and it got a little competitive. So, little funny story about that is that our site coordinator, Rachel Rude, is from Monmouth Elementary School, Kristen is from Talmadge. We had three elementary schools and the middle school participate in UNICEF Kid Power, but Tim Rude is a tutor at the middle school, and he facilitated the group, and let's just say there was a little competition maybe between MES and Talmadge when it got right down to it. So, thank you, and Teresa.
Well, after I graduated from my teaching career, I started working here at Central School District four years ago, and one of my favorite things to do, that all my teacher friends think I'm a little crazy, is I really like to write curriculum. So, one of the things we were trying to do this year is kind of increase our physical activity in our program, and we came across a program that's sponsored by the international group, UNICEF. And what UNICEF is doing every year during the spring for eight weeks is they have a program called Kid Power, and the premise behind the program is basically that kids in the US typically aren't getting enough exercise, but yet worldwide, we have a worldwide hunger problem with kids, suffering from severe acute malnutrition. So, UNICEF came up with an idea about how if we partner those things together, what could we do? So, their idea was that we would put a little fitness band on kids and track their movements, and for every 2,500 steps they take, UNICEF releases a food packet. So, they look kind of like the, I don't know if you've seen like the little Gatorade shop things, it's a, it's a high-nutrition compound that is full of nutritious supplements that equates to one meal. So, for every 2,500 steps they take, it releases a food packet to be distributed to one of 192 countries that UNICEF supports. So, our kids are getting steps, and they're helping kids in other parts of the world. Along with that, we developed a journal, and this is kind of the something that, the idea came up, so I designed this journal for kids to kind of keep track of what they're doing. And in here, there's physical geography, some cultural geography, there's lessons in here on nutrition, and there's also some goal setting. So, they get all kinds of kind of interesting stuff to go along with what we've been doing as far as the exercise part of it. So, I'm not exactly sure what the site coordinators did to them to get so many steps, but I'm sure they're healthier for it, so we'll just go with that. But anyway, it's been just a really successful program. I am just so beyond happy to see how the, each of the programs just grabbed a hold of this and ran with it, and even better, the kids really bought into the program. UNICEF has kind of got this whole thing wired where they know that it's pretty much between fourth and sixth graders that they can tie in, that really buy into this, and there's still some, there's a pretty competitiveness at that age as well. And then, eight weeks is about the amount of time that it starts to maybe get a little boring, you lose, you lose your focus a little bit. So, it's set up for eight weeks, we just ended last Friday, and as parents said, we had the four schools competing, and out of 26 teams, and the really fun thing is that you can see other teams in the area, like schools in Salem and State and Marion, and see what they're doing. And at the end of the whole thing, for the 26 teams, we had, MES was in second, TMS third, ACES was fourth, and IES was in 12th, out of 26. This is the best part, they unlocked 982 food packets. So, that's how many meals, that's how many kids you got fed from that. So, I'm super impressed with the kids, because it takes a lot of dedication, and I think they really, literally, I guess, stepped up.
Rachel?
Hello. So, my name is Rachel Rude, and I'm the site coordinator, MES. I brought with me a...
I brought with me fifth grader Cameron Winkler. And I'm really happy she wanted to come, because I've had her since last year when I first started. And she's just one of those students that you love having, because she goes full force into it, and you're not disappointed. So Cameron, you don't have to talk a lot, but I'm going to ask you a couple questions. What place, how, what place did you take in our group in terms of how many, most steps taken? She took second place, so she earned a water bottle. Sorry. She earned a water bottle at her class, so we gave her that. And I want to show you my band. So she has her band, and I was just kind of used her up on her shoulder. Like just today, she had over eighteen thousand steps, and I'm like, I get about ten thousand.
Just today?
Just today. So, yeah, she's a rock star when it comes to this. And I loved it, because about like the, like three weeks ago, my kids were kind of flack. We were at first place for a long time, and they kind of got a little, I think arrogant. And so all of a sudden, Ash Creek stepped up their game. And I was like, oh, I might tell them this, because in the end, like, I'm competitive, but it's for the kids. And so, I was like, see, guys, no, you're losing to Ash Creek. And they lost it, and we were, I think, an average of eleven thousand four hundred some steps a day, and all of a sudden, it was eleven thousand eight hundred steps. And then I went to go check, and we got beat by Kaiser School. I was like, ah, but we still took first, kind of. So, it was super fun, and just seeing kids step up to do something really good. And I meant to bring our poster that we had, but we were doing little activities like what UNICEF means to us, and them writing their answers and posting it in our school. So it was really fun, and I think our school unlocked over three hundred food packets, so that was really cool.
Yeah. Anyway, I just want to, again, thank you to the programs. You know, thank you Karen for backing us on this program. And, you know, if you see kids with their blue bands on, they've converted them over to the summertime now, so they can keep going. And I think it's just really important that we see our kids turning into global good citizens. So, enough said. Thank you.
Another activity, something we purchased this year, is a cricket cutter for each of the schools. And Rachel's going to talk a little bit about that. And just thinking about sustainability, what you can make with those is amazing. And do a little in-house business with these kids that are all getting up here and speaking, that's for sure.
So, I just brought a few things that we made. So, one thing we did with our students is we had a cricket club, and I'm so lucky that we had a tutor that knows how to use it. Because at first I got it, and I was like, oh my goodness, I didn't know I could do this. But she was like, oh, I have a cricket. I said, yes you do. Awesome. So, we, that's a cup we passed around. We did sticker screen prints on. That's where Ms. Trepp, our second grade teacher at our school, does art with us every Monday. So we made her a cup to give her once she gets married to Ms. Reiser. Now we're passing, we had made a thank you card, we made stickers, we made, stickers are going canvases. And this last one is actually a t-shirt iron-on. And if you hadn't seen, I'll be honest, girls tend to flock to the cricket club. However, the moment a boy chose a Fortnite screen print t-shirt, you would have thought we just, we just opened a whole new door. And so, we had a family night last Thursday, and I think we made at least five more of them. And so it's been really fun to see, because the kids at first hadn't liked, I don't know what it is, but they really are seeing what you can do with it. We made Mother's Day cards, and so it's really fun to have something like this where it's technology, and anyone can do it. And I'm excited to see, and we even got, she got a sticker for MES on her wall, so it was fun too. But, yeah, I really love it, just being able to do something extra with the students that's a little out of the ordinary. So, it's been really fun.
Next up is Mr. Dave Beetley, and he's going to talk a little bit about robotics at Talmage Middle School and 3D Print Club. And I think there's a couple students here also that are going to do a little demonstration, so.
So I'm Dave Beetley. I teach sixth grade science at Talmage. And last year Karen came to me and said there were some kids in Cougar Zone that wanted to do 3D printing. And if she got a 3D printer, would I run a club? And I said, sure. And so we started off last year and at the beginning of this year, kind of just designing some things in a CAD program, and then printing them on a 3D printer, learning different skills on the printers. Later on, we kind of incorporated some electronics into that, and then we were able to get some more resources later in the year, and tie that into robotics. So, it's been really cool. We've had like ten to fifteen kids every single week since the beginning of the year, just about. And some of them kind of come and gone, and some of them have stuck around all year. They've been there every week at the club all year. So, I don't have anything else to say, but I asked, they've got three kind of unique driver-operated robots that they're going to show you. And one of them with a claw. We did some competition with some blocks, where they put blocks and move blocks into different scoring zones and compete with each other. One of them, Leslie's got a robot with an arm. And then Elijah's kind of integrated some of the 3D printing into his robot, and he designed and printed a claw for his robot. So Elijah Hayes, Leslie Garcia, and Carlos Rodriguez. You want to talk about your robot too, a little bit? Well, I think you're speaking.
Can you each sort of explain, how about this? Why don't you each explain to us sort of what your thought process was behind making your robotics? Can you guys, each one of you, share a little bit about that?
I think, I will share a little bit about mine. I've always thought 3D printing was really cool. And at first, I went through some trial and error on how I was going to do this, but eventually, I got it. It's a little more than original, and it works. Yeah, it's pretty much just all I can do. I didn't do too much on it.
I stuck with the original one, and I didn't want to go too fancy, like Carlos. Can we do claw, pick up blocks, or something?
Mine was not so original. I didn't really like the claw and how it worked, because the settings on the remote weren't, like, it was messing around. It had too much tension on it, so I just decided to go with like a kind of a scoop. I would go, and like, it just traps everything, and you just put it in the score zone. And then I put some zip ties, so it won't wiggle around too much. That was my robot.
If you want to show it on the ground, I do just want to say and acknowledge to these three, I'm really proud of you for coming. It was super short notice for them, asking them. In fact, Mr. Beetley was going to disassemble, have them disassemble all the robots, and they decided, they got the announcement on Friday to come here on Monday and actually present. So, if you want to show them on the ground, just really quickly, that would be great.
I'll just, I'll just say something real quick about Elijah's robot. So he's had that claw put together for a few weeks now. And today during school, I talked to him, it was not mounted on the robot. I said, hey, let's get some zip ties, we'll mount it on the robot. He said, well, why don't I just design something in the CAD program and print it? It will take two hours, like three-thirty in the afternoon. It'll take two hours, and then you can just pick it up on your way to the meeting. And so I trusted that he designed it correctly. And sure enough, the thing mounted right on there. Took a couple screws, and now it's mounted on the front of his robot. It's pretty impressive.
Can you show us how you would pick up one of those blocks? Or try?
I don't have time to get up.
A lot of weeks what started out as a task to collect and put blocks in scoring zones, ended up in battle bots.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, Karen, for getting your students here. Next up is Steve Milligan, and he's going to talk about Lego Robotics that occurred at every elementary school.
I think I can talk loud enough, with enough microphones around, you can hear me. So what I passed out is some of the code that the kids did so that they could get the robots to function. And so we spent eight weeks working with the kids, learning about, I didn't get enough of it.
Sure.
Enough of the, learning about all the different motors and sensors. And Cameron, it's amazing, she got all those steps, because she sat still for most of our robotics class. And I had, last year I had applied for a grant through Oregon Halo to try and see if I could get some robots and computers. And I wasn't successful with it, so I talked with Karen Harlow about my idea. And when she applied for a grant, she says, well, what would you want if you could get everything you wanted? And so, we got eighteen base kits, we got ten expansion kits, and we got four computers. And so we were able to do a program where we could work with eight kids in each of the three elementary schools. And so Cameron, if you want to go ahead and run that one.
Year one?
Huh?
Year one?
Oh, one, yeah. And so the kids worked on building the robots, and then creating the programs. And it started out just real simple, working with how a motor worked, and getting it to turn around. And so then if you wanted to move the little block out of the way, and then have it do the line follow, which was your, Cameron knows seven. Should be good. And, uh, uh-oh. Move a little further up on the blue line, and just place the color sensor over the blue line. There you go. And so we did a lot of trial and error. Everything didn't always work right the first time. But anyway, we had a lot of fun. And what's exciting for me is looking at what the kids that are at Talmage and the high school are doing. And we're getting a chance to expose these kids, the fourth and fifth graders, to some of the technology. And I just can't imagine what it's going to be like when they're at the high school level. And it's just exciting, because Cameron's one of our little rock stars, but they're rock stars at each of the three schools, and they all participated and had fun. My challenge is, as an instructor in this, was to show them something, and then let them play with it, because mine was like, okay, learn this, learn this, learn this, learn this, learn this. And I kept having to say, wait and let them play between learning, because they learned so much better when I would just get back and let them play. Sometimes it's hard, when one of the kids said, how far would it go in a hundred seconds? And we were at MES, so he was out on the concrete, which I didn't really want him on the concrete. But here he, let him go, and he saw how far a hundred seconds would take his robot. So we had a lot of fun. And I'm hoping there's funding for us for the next year. I guess everybody could say that.
All right, last, I know this is a little bit longer. Michael Chong is our high school site coordinator for Central. Come on in, Michael. And he's going to introduce a couple of students.
Hello. My name is Michael Chong, and I'm the after-school coordinator at Central High School. Our programs support student academically, and also provide students with various enrichment classes, along with our partnership with the community members, the GATE Association. And I actually have two students here that are going to share with you guys how both the PAC and the GATE have impacted them throughout high school.
Today I'm going to talk about the PAC, and it's basically beyond the bells, we basically all know. And for some students, they don't have any connection at their houses, or where they live. So they're in one of them, basically, so. But at the PAC, we basically, we have opportunity to basically encounter the technology, and use homeworks to finish our homeworks. We also have tutors in order to help us, and also have an interpreter for Spanish speaking, just for the students that are basically, only speak one language, is basically Spanish, or only basically speak that language, because they're only used to that. So, we also have other type of clubs there. We also have 3D printing. We also have, let's see, I can't remember the N-Or, but 3D printing, and then math and writing, math enrichments, and creative writing. So, we also create paracords, or in other words, survival places, as you can see right here. And overall, it's a safe place, in my opinion, because it's all, all you can do there is finish your homework, whatever you need. And you can go there, hang out with friends, everything, at least take the day off, at least trying to get out of the stress you're in school, and hang out with your students. And so, yeah, thank you for listening. And I'm going to pass it to my friend Mari, to talk about more about the GATE.
Thank you, Alberto. Hello. My name is Mari Munoz, and I'm a sophomore for Central High School. And today I would like to tell you about the GATE Association. The GATE Association is a community center presented by the after-school program at Central High School, that, where students can come and relax, spend time with friends, and meet new people. I'm the current president of their leadership team, which is a group of students that come and help out, and make the environment a safe place for everyone. There is like a variety of stuff to do over there, like if you want to play video games with your friends, you can do that. If you want to take some break from games, you can go outside and do some activities. Or if you want to stay inside, you can bake some cookies, or make some stir-fry. The GATE and the PAC is a great environment for people to test their social skills, leadership skills, and to have fun, and you know, be active in it. Anyway, thank you for listening, and have a good day.
So, I wanted to thank you all, first of all, for allowing us, almost three years ago, we're just finishing up our third year at Central Health and Wellness Center. We're the first school-based health center in Polk or Marion County. And I'm privileged to have the opportunity to say thank you for allowing us to move forward with this project. For some of you that may not know, we are a consortium of Capital Dental, Polk County Behavioral Health, and Salem Health. West Valley Hospital is the medical sponsor, and we partner with Central School District to provide all of those full healthcare, medical, dental, and behavioral care. Over at the Central Health and Wellness Center, across the street from the Over at the Central Health and Wellness Center across the street from the high school, we, the students are our priority, so we are there mainly to provide care for them. But we are also open to the community to certain extents within our clinic. So just wanted to let you know a couple of things that we worked on this year. Kim Prosser, who wasn't able to be here today, is our clinic coordinator. And her major role is to work with the students at Central High School, sometimes the middle school as well, as our youth advisory team. And we used, she worked with the Power Peers class for most of this year. They had the opportunity, they may have told you to go to Salem on advocacy day earlier. Did they do a presentation on that? So that was one, that was the first year we were able to take them, meet with senators and representatives. Couple of projects we're working on on the medical side is, one of the key performance measures for school-based health centers is to increase the percentage of well-child exams that we do at all of our centers. And we are looking at about a 25% increase over last year since we focused on making sure that all of our students get well-child exams, either with us or with their primary care, their usual primary care provider. The other elective one that we chose was for vaccinations. So we were hoping to increase the percentage of our adolescents that are vaccinated and up-to-date on their vaccination. So we've, so far, we've increased from about 53% to 72%. 53% probably sounds a little bit low to you. The reason for that is that one of the vaccines for meningitis is not required by the state. It's only recommended, but we are including it in our population of kids because we want to try to get all of those kids vaccinated against meningitis as well, even though it's not required yet. So, but, so we have had a little bit of an increase, and we feel that we will continue to get more of those kids done. There's two, there's two meningitis shots, and I'm just talking about the general meningitis one. The one that's required for Oregon State University students and the University of Oregon students is a different vaccine. It's a meningitis B vaccine. And we do offer that as well, but that's for the older kids, when they're getting ready to go to college, to either of those two institutions. So let's see, just a little bit of information. We collect data quarterly, so I don't have a full year's worth of data for you. And what I handed out is just the first three quarters of this school year, starting with July 1st of last year. So the comparison is for all three, for all three quarters of 2000, the first year we were open, 2015 to 16, then 2016 to 17, and then 2017 to 18. So we had an increase of about 2200, from 2,200 visits to about 3,500 visits after the second year. And we're pretty much on track for about the same number of visits this year, but it looks like the majority, there's an increase in the percentage of student visits from last year. And then just other, just wanted to bring a little bit to your attention about just the population of students, and that's the pie graph that I sent to you. So we saw the biggest increase so far this year in the ninth through 12th graders. So we're kind of happy that, we feel like the Power Peers class has helped us to increase that awareness of the health centers. Students feel comfortable just walking over when they need to, after school, during breaks, or if they need care. So we had about 39% of just our children or students are from ninth and 12th graders this year so far, as opposed to about 27 last year. So those are some of the highlights, some of the things that we're proud of. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any. Okay. Thank you. Take it. The first thing on the agenda this evening was an administrative report about budget overview and committee process. There's nothing in your packet. Just a reminder that at this point, the next step in the process is our budget hearing. We will be having that at some point during your June 25th retreat and work session. We'll take a recess, call the budget hearing to order, and present the, sort of the updated numbers at that point. One of the things we mentioned on the budget committee was we were hoping to hear about our after-school grant renewal, and that would change the budget that you might want to adopt. That decision has been delayed. We're not sure when. Oregon Department of Education is trying to institute a peer review process, and they didn't apparently have enough reviewers to look at all the grant applications to meet their own June 1st deadline. But whatever, whatever we do know at that point, we will present to you to either adopt the budget as the budget committee approved it, or see if there are any changes that you'd like to make at that time. All that process is, nothing new to report. I included in the packet the financial reports, both our summary financial report with a little bit of a summary from me about finance, how things are looking. No surprises, nothing new there. I also included the maintenance and capital project list that we anticipate for this summer. And for those of you who've been around for a couple of years, it's a pretty short list compared to what we've had in the past. There are a few things we are still in the process of determining. And other than that, it's a lot of small projects that our own team will probably carry out. One thing that we hadn't really talked about, there was a potential problem with our fire alarm system at Talmage. A lot of the parts are original equipment. And turns out that many of the parts aren't being manufactured anymore. So we were looking at potentially replacing major parts of it. Our team did find a, you know, probably obscure little place that still has some parts, and they think we could keep it going for another couple of years. But we are looking at that. We probably have a two- to five-year patch worked out before we need to do those replacements. But that would potentially, if we ever were to have some bond work done on Talmage, that would then become part of the bond work that we would do. So that is one new item. The other thing that you'll notice on the capital projects list, I did mention to the budget committee that we were, we had budgeted for a potentially purchase of a modular to replace Ash Creek, which is currently sort of where that pinch point of enrollment is. And although it would take the board adopting the budget for that and board approving the purchase, we are just kind of moving forward to get more information. The budget would require some site prep and permitting, and that's listed here as well, in addition to the actual purchase that you'll be hearing a lot more about. So that's all I have. I will entertain questions, and I'm sure they'll be entertaining. Done. Well. Good, Mary Kay, you have no questions. Oh, that is entertaining. Thank you. All right. Thank you all.
Next.
All right, I have just a couple of announcements. One, we're going to spend a little bit of time on, I do want to walk through the draft calendar, but before I do that, I have two people in the audience that I would like to publicly announce. Dr. Nicole Smith, and you would work your way up here first. So I am excited to introduce you and to announce that Dr. Nicole Smith is our next principal at Independence Elementary. She will be replacing current principal Charmin Ensmeyer, who will be joining us at the district office as our director of equity access and instructional technology. So we're excited to have Nicole here, Charmin staying. Nicole, Dr. Smith has been here 18 years of service in Oregon in her education. She has been an elementary teacher. She has a great background in English language development and is currently a K-12 instructional support at Tiger-Tualatin. So I just wanted to introduce the board. We are excited to, we publicly announced to IES on Friday. And then this morning, we sent out an email, so everyone now knows, and it is now out publicly. So welcome, Dr. Smith, to our team.
Thank you. I'm honored and am grateful for this opportunity. And I look forward to diving into the work. So thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks.
Come on up, Rosanna. Our current Central High School teacher, Rosanna Larson, has also been selected to serve as our next assistant principal there. She will be also replacing assistant principal Jason Clark, who will be joining the district office as the director of program planning and project management. We're excited to have him down here, as well as bringing Rosanna on board. She has spent her entire service as an educator in the state of Oregon, but specifically here at Central High School. She has served as the English department chair. She's on the building leadership team. She's a, she's the current site coordinator for AVID, which is Advancement via Individual Determination, which is a college and career readiness program. She's also a member of the PBIS team and part of the trauma-informed cohort. So she is the founder of Power Peers, which started in 2015. I have not asked the question yet of who's taking that over, but I hear there's a plan, so I don't need to know now, but I know that there's a plan that potentially, with our new incoming principal, Ms. Renan, that they will build that plan. So we're excited to have her on board. So welcome to our administrative team.
Great, thank you. I'm excited to continue serving in a different capacity, but to still be part of the Central High School team and serving our community. So thank you.
Welcome aboard. Both of those lovely ladies went through a very rigorous process. We have changed a little bit in how we go about hiring administrators, so it's, it's pretty rigorous, I would say. And all of our administrators, in some form or fashion, are involved in it because we are about building a quality administrative team, supporting teachers and students and families. And so we're very intentional in how we go and approach that with our administration approval. So the next piece I just want to share with you, and please know it is in a draft form. In front of you, you do have the draft of the district calendar. There you go, you can have another one. I want to start with just a quick thank you for the committee. They did amazing work. They, it was a representation from all five of the schools, as well as other district departments. Transportation was involved as part of that. The committee actually only met twice and came to an agreement. And then this draft has been shared with the associations. And additional feedback we are gathering right now for the contracts for both associations. Again, this is going to be shared today in draft form because we are still in negotiations with OSEA and OSCA. And so there may, there could be some changes to the calendar as we continue through negotiations. So that's why you're seeing it in my report right now, and it will be posted up on the website as a draft and once we finish negotiations. I want to point out a couple of key things that I think are important. Conferences, which are in green. There was a pretty lengthy conversation in regards to conferences. This past year, we, we worked all day and then did conferences in the evening. I will say, our staff, by the time March came around, it was a very, very difficult time. And so per their request, we had a lot of conversation at our first meeting and talked about how much time does each middle, high school need, had a lot of conversations about that. It was clear that all the conferences are very important, but that first one in November, there was, there was a major focus on wanting to be able to spend the entire day. It takes the elementaries about 16 total hours to do conferences. We only worked eight, well, really, seven and a half hours a day. So again, we were very intentional of the conferences and where they fell. This is going to be the first time, we did conferences leading into Thanksgiving break as well. This year, we're actually, last year we did it the four days before. This year, we're going to do it the first two days going into Thanksgiving. We also had Thanksgiving break because we had some comp time. One of the things, as you look at the calendar, which I, again, I think the committee did an outstanding job, there are major blocks where we don't have any disruptions. So if you remember last year's calendar, I think we only went to school 12 days in November and nine days in December. You can see in this calendar, in November and December, there's almost, after Thanksgiving, we have a full month of school almost before going on vacation again. That is significant. I think that's great work by the committee in trying to allow students to be successful and not have so many transitions, big transitions after break. So again, you're going to see, we tried to streamline, so there were months at a time where we were not having large breaks, so the staff and the students can stay, I'd like to say, in the routines, really working towards learning and growing throughout those times. So that's, that's one of the pieces. You'll see on the day for the 21st, which is the Wednesday of November, because of the conferences, we're actually also going to do a few evening hours. We also know that not all families can make during the day. So the committee recommended that we have eight hours over those four conference days, again, two in November and two in March. You will see the one in March is, has a little asterisk by it. That will be a half day. We also needed to make sure that we met all of the hours needed by the state, and so that needed to be a half a day to make that happen, specifically more for the high school than anything. So you're just going to see a little bit about conferences. The other piece, and I know that I have shared with all of you, that's very important as we continue down this, is professional development days. So you will see, as of August 27th, we are adding or recommending to add a third professional development day on the front end of the school year. So you would have three professional development days in August, one state professional development day in October, a professional development day in December. And then you will see also two days, one in March and one in April. There was some conversation in regards to grading because the middle school does fall on quarters. And so we did some adjustment where we split grade days, elementary and the high school preferred a grade day during March. And then we would do professional development that day with the middle school. And then you see in April, the middle school has the grade day, and then we would do professional development there. We believe that this is going to be a great approach with our staff, working with the associations, working with our teachers and administrators to really develop some quality professional development, again, early in the year. One of the things in last year's calendar, there was a May professional development day. May's really, really hard on staff because we're doing testing, we're starting to close the end of the school year. So we had the conversation of removing that PD day from May and moving it to the beginning of the year. And so that's what we're moving forward with on the professional development days. And again, the first day of school, if you look at it, because of where the professional development days, we actually will start school on Wednesday. Like I said, we are still in negotiations, so we do need to probably, we will need to work with the association because Wednesday is our early release-out day. So that first day of school, we would actually want it to be a full day. And so we probably, we will be working potentially on a memorandum of understanding once we get through the contract negotiations that we are currently in right now. So that's, that's one of the other days. And then the last thing you'll see throughout, just to be safe, is how I phrase it. You will see at certain times, if you look, for example, on February, on the holiday, where it says February 18th, you see an H and an S. Should we have horrific snow? I have been in a school district where you had to go to school till July, and the state chose not to waive any days. And so we literally had to go to school till July. It is not, that's not good for students, it's not good for staff, it's not good for families. It can be really hard to go to school till almost July. So, and again, this is part of, just, we will continue to work with the unions on this. But you see in both February, March, during spring break, again, first two days, not the whole spring break, that if we were to have large storms that would take place, there are additional built-in snow days. Obviously, we would be working with the associations and to make sure that if that happened, we'd have protocols in place and systems to say, you know, when would we make those decisions? decisions, at least a month ahead of time, knowing that we would want to be able to get communication out to families, et cetera. So we believe we have met all of the contracted days for both associations, we have built-in all the holidays and so, like I said, this is the draft, draft forward. The only other change, if you look at, is in December. So winter break, there was a request to move some of winter break after the holiday to get more time in, in the school year to give us those four weeks. So you will see that we actually are ending, school actually would end on the 19th. We would have a professional development day slash grade day for the high school and then we'd be on two weeks of vacation. We, there was, several of the committee members looked at other school districts around us, a lot of schools are doing because Christmas is, falls on or the winter break and the holidays fall, the beginning of that next week. It's just easier to shift that, to have the kids through the 19th and then they would not come back to school till the 7th. So I'm going to stop and open up to any questions that you might have about the calendar.
Is May 27th and also a snow?
Yeah, it would be, correct, potentially, yes. Yep. So anything with, within S would be that potential makeup day. And again, this is barring that it's a lot of days and there's no waivers.
No other questions?
That's in the next part.
And? That's it?
Your report?
Yeah, I am done.
All right. Well, my report, we have upcoming activities. We have Senior Awards this Wednesday, 9th, and it, I thought it started at 5:00.
Ms. Larson, what time do Senior Awards start?
6:30.
6:30. 6:30 on Wednesday.
6:30. Encourage everybody to come. I have to say, it was really exciting to be on the IBV Thomas Committee and help distribute. You know, we distributed $49,000 in scholarships, so it's pretty amazing. So graduation is on the 8th and so we're supposed to be at Panther Pit to pick up your gown if you're going to be up on the stage and then we'll meet down in the, in the weight room and wait until they walk us all out. So it says that we have reserved parking for your school board folks behind, behind the building there. And you're so excited about our retreat on the 25th at 4 o'clock. Our next board meeting is on July the, July the 9th and so the 25th is also the evening that we will have a Budget Committee meeting at 6 o'clock, correct?
Whenever time you'd like. If you'd like it to start at 6 in the break in your work session.
Double duty that day. So the summer conference is in VEN for OSBA and please confirm with Adriana tonight if you're planning to attend and that's on July 21st and 22nd. And I think that's all I have. And with that, we're down to the consent agenda. So we have some personnel actions in the packet also for everybody to look at and do you want to explain everything, anything before we prove it?
Just if anyone has any questions.
No questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I assume so.
Moved by Jerry. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Second if I take you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Cassie Dammis. And we're back to Cs.
Great. I have a couple of our sort of annual resolutions for you to look at this evening, Chair Motion and members of the Board. The first is a resolution to approve the construction excise tax rates for the coming year. I mentioned in the summary that those are set by the State Department of Revenue each year. We have historically adopted the maximum rate that they allow for that and I have included that information along with further history of our collection on the construction excise tax. That fund that currently sits at about a million dollars, we would be using some of that for the purchase and installation and furnishing of the portables because that is an allowable expense under the construction excise tax. A completely new rub on the high school would be another. And again, when we went through our bond process, we had committed to use those funds to augment the general obligation bonds and so we would like to continue to have some of that in the future for that type of expense if we were ever to go out for a bond again. So our suggestion is to adopt the Department of Revenue indexed rate to be effective July 1st, 2018 and there is for your consideration a suggested motion on your summary page.
Sue, do I hear a motion?
We're all trying to make Christine agree.
Everybody wants to jump to this one.
No, I don't want it.
Well, this is, this is the hard one. I took the easy one, so you guys might as well.
I'll do it. I moved to adopt the Department of Revenue indexed tax rate limits for construction excise tax for the fiscal year 2018-19 to be effective July 1st, 2018.
Second. Moved by Peggy, second by Jerry. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Cassie Dammis, please, thanks to the states for raising a two cents. And the next one, Cs.
And just so you notice, there's major construction going on, couple of blocks that way. That should help our refund. Although we do have a maximum dollar amount on non-residentials.
The next item for your consideration is each year at this time, the superintendent brings to you a list of the people that we rely on to assist us with such important things as our insurance and our audit and our attorneys that we rely on for advice. So I've listed those here, those are unchanged from prior years and ask that you select these providers to represent us and a suggested motion for your insurance broker will send here. Yes, I'd like you to recommend our insurance broker.
Do you see something? I have one question.
Yeah.
When was the last time we went out for, for audit?
We have not and we are looking at that. We've, we've had some consulting work done by other auditors as well, so it's time to look that. We also actually will be looking at the services. Some of those things just haven't been done very regularly, but yeah, always a good idea to go out and see what's available to us.
We adopt the operation resolution selecting office, insurance carriers, insurance broker and attorneys as presented.
Do I hear a second?
I'll thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And lastly, I guess it's not last, we got two more.
I wasn't sure if we wanted, if you wanted to do the student fees, they're not included here. I thought you wanted.
No, we actually are going to wait on our student fees till our June 25th meeting, so we're going to have that conversation there. And with adoption, we'll do the, we'll do the budget and then we'll quickly go through the fees because it's important that both of those are tied together, obviously, and so want to spend a little bit more time with that piece of it, so.
Then we're down to the last one. Now, she's looking at you.
Yes. So in your packet, you will see a draft of the board calendar that we are looking at. One of the things that you will see that is a little bit different is I have marked in, I'm going to call that red, very similar to what we did this year, a handful of retreats where we would spend a little bit, a few more hours together, one in August, one in November and then one in June 24th versus also having three PLCs, which will only go a little over an hour or about an hour and a half, 90 minutes. So I tried to do very similar to what we did this past year, my first year here with board meetings, obviously staying on Mondays, but then looking at every other month or so, having either a PLC or a board retreat. We may not use all of them, or the retreats, we may not use all of them, but wanted to have them on the calendar just so we were consistent as we move forward with that piece of it. So I would open up if you all have any questions, concerns, you also see on there as we have in April and May with our Budget Committee meetings, the lovely green and the dollar signs because it's so important, that time of year, that we complete those tasks. So I will just open it up for you, questions that you might have.
They're looking at you guys.
Oh, an adoption.
I make a motion to approve the board calendar of meetings for the 2018-2019 school year as presented.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you, Darcy, for the second. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Do you have any unfinished business?
So at this, now we're down to comments by individual workers. Just in a hurry to get in the other room.
I'll make a comment. I apologize for being late, I'm in my new retirement role and I forgot it was Monday. So.
Every day is Saturday now, right?
I know. Yes, that's funny. Anyway.
Anything else?
I would say it was, albeit a little bit of a long meeting, it was nice, it's always nice to hear from students, no matter what they're doing.
So I just want to say thank you to all of our folks that are on staff throughout the entire district. It's coming down to the end, stay focused, only another week. A little more to me. Anyway, so I know the seniors were pretty excited. All the seniors on gun club posted their names on a phone poll, but they were, it was their last day of school, so I thought that was kind of cool. So items for the, any future meeting, we have an organizational chart that we'll probably be seeing in July or August and at this time, we're going to go into executive session under provisions of ORS 192660, open meeting law. The Board of Directors will enter executive session for the following purpose, to conduct deliberations with persons designated to carry on labor negotiations and specific information discussed in executive session shall, may not be made public and shall remain undisclosed. The Board may return to regular session to take action on executive session discussion if needed. And with that, we'll take a 10-minute recess and then we'll meet in the Board.